Stand, all rise.
All right, Mr. Crowley, if you would give us the indication.
Father God, we thank you for your role for us. Healing to many people who are sick, folks who have other issues going on in their lives, all of those who are experiencing depression, suicide, unemployment, all of them need just your hand and mercy upon us. So we ask for that. We ask, Father, that you help us to see how to steer in ways that are beneficial to us, down the roads that help the most people in our county. And we ask, Father, for just it to be a continued blessed place to live as of things that would be very important.
Amen. All right, I'm gonna ask Mr. Mike Nastas to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like to do the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. We'll start off with a presentation from Mr. Nastas.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. It gives me great pleasure as the emergency manager to recognize one of my employees, Michelle Truby-Tillen, was awarded at the emergency, not the emergency, at the floodplain managers conference this year as the 2020 recipient of the floodplain managers award for the year of 2020. I said that twice now. She's recognized for all her work in the floodplain management field. And I'll let her brag a little bit about herself. Tell them about the Grant Pinkerton Award and all the other stuff.
So this is the second time I've received this award. I received one in 2005. The award's given to someone who's done something at the state level as well as the local level that has achieved some type of improvement to the overall profession of floodplain management. I've also received the Grant Pinkerton Award from that association, which is for service. I've served on the board since 2005 in numerous capacities. I've also done training and I do travel to do training to other floodplain managers all over the state and sometimes outside of the state. I've been to Texas for training, that kind of stuff, to be a train the trainer. One of the other things I did was I designed a field guide, a mini field guide for floodplain managers, so that instead of having to look through the big, you know, million-page book that they could just flip through and have the information at their fingers that they needed. And that was one of the reasons I received this award. So one of the things that floodplain management is designed to do is to keep you from having repeated damage to structures due to flooding, whether they're placed in an area that's high risk or it becomes an area of high risk. It doesn't have to always start out that way. By being in the floodplain management program and having a program that's in good standing, your floodplain management program gives you access to mitigation funding whenever you do have a disaster, so that you can rebuild, buy out, do whatever you need to do to help the citizens achieve a healthier area to live in and return to normalcy. We're also part of the CRS program. The CRS program is an insurance program. It gives us a discount on flood insurance policies.
When you say us, you mean the residents?
Citizens, the citizens of San Juan County. And presently, we are Level 8, which gives a 10% discount to a normal flood insurance policy. Now, if you didn't have a flood insurance program, if you weren't a member of the NFIP, if you were to be in trouble with the NFIP, you would no longer have federally-backed mortgages available to you, because you have to have flood insurance if you have a federally-backed mortgage. Now, that doesn't mean that you have to get the highest rate possible. The other thing I do is I assist the citizens in finding ways to reduce their flood insurance costs through mitigation, putting in vents, building in better ways, that type of thing, bringing in training and programming, so that they can have a cheaper insurance rate and still have coverage.
So Commissioners, Chairman, members of the Commission, please join us in award Michelle Truby-Tillen, 2020 floodplain manager.
One, 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 one with me.
Ready, smile. One, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one.
And one with that.
One with that.
So I've done it before.
I'm a rebel.
Is that a rebel with a cause or without a cause? All right, we are now in our regular meeting and we are at the point where we need to approve the agenda. Mr. Manager or Commissioners, are there any changes?
Mr. Chairman, no changes. All right.
They have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Been moved in second. Discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. All right, that gets us to the consent agenda. Number one is consideration of the fiscal year 21 budget adjustment number six, which is resolution number 20-21-30. Next is number two, consideration of approval for regular meeting minutes from November 15, 2020. And that's it. Any questions on those two? There being none, they have a motion to approve. Consent agenda.
Turnover.
Been moved in second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. All right, that gets us to old business, consideration of 2021 state and federal legislative requests. Mr. Stark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Yes, this is an old business item from the last meeting. You all agreed to table it till tonight, to give a little more thought to what our state and federal legislative requests should be for 2021. Of course, as we discussed last time, this session will be a little different in terms of funding that's available. We'd heard from our legislative liaison, Mr. Scanlon, that we should anticipate funding, at least the way it's kind of looking right now, if we had requests, not in total more than $500,000, that would probably be wise if we're trying to get some projects funded. And so, of course, the majority of our capital projects that exist on our capital infrastructure capital improvement plan are obviously much larger than that. Very, very few projects that would fall within that, that range. And so what we did after last meeting, taking in some of the feedback that you all provided me, we did reach out. One of the suggestions was Jackson Lake and looking at recreational improvements there. Mr. Perel reached out to the State Game and Fish Department and just talked about what those might look like if we were to ask for some funding. And they were extremely excited about that opportunity because they have an opportunity with federal funding, if they had a state or local match, that they would be able to maximize some dollars, a four-to-one ratio. 25% match could turn into an $800,000 project if a $200,000 request was submitted. So within your packet, you can see a letter provided by the Assistant Director of Game and Fish suggesting what those improvements might be and how we could partner together on that.
Now, let me interrupt you here.
Yes.
One of the things in that letter that's really important, that they would be joint improvements such as rehabilitating parking areas, and if you've been out there, that's badly needed, to improve in access trails. And by having that, it gives people another choice to either go to Riverwalk or go there. And again, all this goes in line with our outdoor initiative, a possible floating fishing pier, that would be neat for people to take their kids or grandkids out. And probably most important, increasing lake access for those with limited mobility, because right now, there's no mobility, there's no access for those with limited mobility. So when we finish discussion, I'm gonna make a motion that we put this in our priorities. Go ahead on the second one, please.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The other suggestion that Mr. Perel came up with, just trying to find a project that would fit within the parameters of the funding that we expect, is looking at current road resurfacing projects that are needed in the county. And he put together, once again, in your packet, an estimate for a road 5500 to chip and crack seal seven and a half miles of that road. That road is soon due for such a resurfacing project. This would fit nicely with the update we're gonna give to you on where the 5500 bridge project stands. This project would fall right behind completion of the bridge. It would chip and crack seal from McGee Park all the way to Highway 550. So that's another project that we thought we would give, present to you for consideration. The legislature really likes these type of projects, because this is a materials-only request. We would provide the labor and equipment, and so they really like to see when we've got skin in the game in projects. And then, of course, we talked about last time, the five-mile bridge alternative study that sort of fits in that range, $150,000. It's a project we thought we had funded last legislative session. Unfortunately, the transportation bill that included that project was vetoed by the governor, and so we got received funding for that project. But that's another project that would, would fit within the range of projects for you to consider. Now, those are state projects. And as we discussed last time, as we're looking at federal requests, generally speaking, federal requests are usually, those types of dollars are made available through competitive grants. But who knows? Maybe with, you know, a new, potential for a new transportation bill at the federal level, there could be some, some dollars allocated that aren't on a competitive grant basis. So generally, we're gonna look at major projects that are, that are gonna, you know, find favorable funding, favorable review from federal, from federal project managers. And I would suggest if we were gonna look at listing two projects for federal consideration that we consider, the COTAF subdivision water and wastewater system improvements, which is number one on our ICIP list, and then number four, the Pinion Hills Extension Phase Three, to continue finding additional funding for the light-of-way phase acquisition.
Those are federal.
Those are federal requests. If, if we want to submit federal projects, and we have the last couple of years, of course, it hasn't gone anywhere because there's just not funding available unless we were to submit on, say, a build grant project, which we did this past year in conjunction with the city of Farmington. I believe it was the fifth year, is that right, Mr. Perel, that we've submitted for a federal grant to see the final completion of the Pinion Hills project. But with that said, you know, I think the most important part of tonight's discussion could focus on the state legislative requests, because we do have a real opportunity to secure some funds there. So I can stand for any questions you might have.
So as I understand it.
Mr. Chairman.
Hold on one second, Ms. Sullivan. I'm getting some clarification. One, so for the state, the Jackson Lake, two, the 5500, then what was the third one?
Third one for consideration, that kind of fits within the available dollars, would be the five-mile bridge alternative study. It's number three in our ICIP list.
Okay.
For $150,000.
All right, so I'd like to see those one, two, and three. Go ahead, Commissioner Sullivan.
That's just what I was gonna ask you. I was gonna ask Mike how you feel about it. Do you feel pretty good about the studies and everything?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Sullivan, yes. You know, the alternative study, right now, Mr. Perel and his team have done a great job in securing and kind of fortifying that that since the West Dunn debutment. But, you know, as you know, we're, we're one potential large rain, rain event away from, from having some major issues there. And so having a study done of the different alternatives and some refreshed cost estimates would be very helpful if we were to ever have a bridge outage.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. All right, there's been a motion. Let me have a second, so we'll go into discussion.
I'll second.
Second, all right, discussion. Commissioner Beckstead.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Stark, do we want to limit it to those three, or do we want to ask for more, knowing that they might not approve it, but if there is money, that we don't leave something on the table? Is that an option, or what's your opinion?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Beckstead, that's certainly an option. But I've had a couple of different discussions with our legislative liaison, and he's suggesting that if we get too far above and beyond the $500,000 level, it really, it's not gonna be advantageous. It really feels like there's a minimal amount of money available. Of course, we've done really well the last couple of years with capital outlay. Last year, we were over $7 million, and those types of dollars just aren't available. And so it's really one of those situations where he's suggesting a more reasonable request will probably go further for us this year than, than trying to put together a larger list of projects that we just know there aren't available dollars for. You might recall last year, we threw the kitchen sink at it in terms of projects, including the sheriff's office helicopter replacement, which is still on our list and still of need at some point in the future if we want to maintain a helicopter program. So that's certainly something that we could just have in the mix. And if there were some large dollars spiritually available, we would be ready to gobble those up. And I think just informing our legislators, as you know, we have great local legislators who work collaboratively together in the best interest of our entire area, trying to find projects that they can fund with the available dollars they have, and more importantly, projects that will get done. And they're very good at that. You know, we could explain to them, hey, here's our top three, and here's one if for some reason there are extra dollars available, we stand ready to, with our arms out.
Well, could we maybe add on the ADA improvements, you know, that where if it doesn't get funded, that's fine, but I would hate to not ask. If you don't ask for it, you don't get it.
Sure, sure.
So I just hate to leave, leave some on the table, and we could prioritize them, like you said, but at least we asked for it. If there is, certainly there, I don't know.
I don't have a problem adding something, but the ADA is a million dollars, right? So is there something there that anyone likes a little more that's not so much, because...
Now, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Beckstead, to your point, one of the benefits we have with the ADA request is that we received recently a $750,000 community development block grant to help us with those ADA improvements. Now, that doesn't complete them in full for what we have remaining here at the county, but it's, it's a big step in the right direction. So we could even put in a smaller request that maybe is $100,000, that includes ADA improvements, and if we were successful, hey, that's just, we're that much closer to finishing off improving some of our buildings to make them 100% accessible. Just a thought.
Yeah, I just, I hate to leave, leave something out there.
All right.
I'm not sure if our legislators would come to us and be like, hey, is it, is it foreclosed if we don't ask for it, ask for it later, if they say, oh, hey, there's a little extra money here?
All right, let me ask this. Commissioner Beckstead, would you like to offer that as a friendly amendment? The number four would be the ADA for $100,000?
I would ask for that amendment.
All right. To do that, Commissioner Sullivan would need to agree, my recommendation is do that. You agreed with that? All right. And that was, since you made the motion and you were the second, that means it acceptable. Any other discussion? All right, no more discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. All right, that gets us to new business. Item number one is a consideration to ratification for the state EMS vehicle grant project. Mr. Moller, Mr. Chief.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we're looking for ratification for the application we made for the state fire, or, sorry, state EMS vehicle grant act. As you know, a few months ago, we applied for the state fire fund for a rescue vehicle for District 4 of Cleveland. We did not get that grant. This was just the next one available, trying to, so. Stand for the questions.
Questions, like where do we get the other 24,000?
So we're gonna use state fire funds for the matching funds. They won't hit the general ones at all. And they fund 75%. The unit is 101,000. It is an all-wheel-drive transport capability. We're not, we're an ambulance service, but that's, which would be, which would also save the rest of the, which is, you know.
So when we get it, can I do a trial ride, first drive?
We, we'd like to invite people over to sit at the top, hold the ball if you want.
Okay. If there are no, go ahead, Commissioner Crowley.
Mr. Chair, so in the budget, there's not enough in the one line item. We have to combine, we want a one line item to reach the 24,000, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Crowley, yes. The note you're seeing is that the budget is okay in that, within that line with, with the roll-up. So in total, we're, we're able to capture that, just not in that one specific one.
We've got to give and take, whatever else we can.
I would move to approve the ratification.
Second.
Moved in second. Any other discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. And I'm, for the record, I'm gonna assume, Commissioner Sullivan, that you voted yes on the last two motions, unless I hear otherwise. All right, thank you. All right, that gets us to item number two, consideration to implement exclusive mail prescription program, the San Juan County Employee Plan members. Ms. Wood.
Hello, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair. I mean, so what we are, we are asking to, the exclusive mail program that's put on by our, that's the measure which is where we are at. So currently, as it spans, running the cap rate for my budget here, have you learned, what we're, what we're, what we're, um, we looked at ways that would, that would, that would be our benefit. And we proposed this option through our pharmacy. And what it does is requires anybody that's on medication, we know every certain day, that you give your money, or it's, or it's, we'll ship it directly to you, to whatever address you like to, a lot, it's worth it. You know, your, your neighbor, their home, they want them to give you medication for you, we get, we get that. It's very, we do transfer medications. I actually did it myself, and have had great results. I went ahead and turned it over a little bit, asked for, 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 and I said, if it's more than $30, I'm all for it. So the great things about this program, that one, it will, is as much as you can spend overall, that's true. The other part of it that will be, that's, that's, moving to mail medications, will get a half, you can use the, in their, so right now, a dinner is okay for 30 days, 90, so that's, that's $10, moving to the mail options that they will provide. This does not impact anything that involves immediate bills, so like a box of, that, that, that they use in the mail, and.
So one of the things.
Am I, am I quiet?
Right? Test, test. Does that work? All right.
All right, so one of the questions I have, go ahead and say your name for him to hear.
Melissa Wood.
Okay. So Melissa, one of the things I'm thinking is, people aren't gonna be able to get into their doctor right away, because they're gonna have to do something with that prescription. I think this is a good idea, but maybe I'd like to move it back a month to give people a little more time during COVID, rather than start February, maybe start March. Would that be a major issue with you?
Commissioner, it would not. I just would like to add, though, you do not need to see your provider to move your prescription. Actually, you just fill out the form and either mail or fax it in, and they will move it for you.
Well, so let's just say that Mr. Commissioner Beckstead's on heart medicine, and the prescription is at Walgreens. So what does he fax or email in?
Mr. Chairman, so there is two forms. There's either a new form, which you would, would obviously need to go to your provider for if it was a new medication. But for transfers, it's a transfer form, you simply need to have your prescription number, the pharmacy, write that down on all the form, along with your required payment, how you would like to pay, either check or with a card, send that to ServuRx, and they actually have all the information in their system from your previous fills to just transfer that to their, their pharmacy.
Well, your previous fills, what do you mean?
So if you're on a maintenance medication.
So I'm talking about when you're starting.
So yes, yes, sir, correct. If, if it is a brand-new medic, maintenance medication, you would.
Not a brand-new, and let's say he's been on it for six months, and now he wants to change. He fills out this form, he didn't have to see the, the existing pharmacy or pharmacist, and he didn't have to go back to the doctor, just fills out the forms, they send everything to Walgreens and say, hey, give me that, we're gonna start taking care of it.
Mr. Chairman, that is correct.
So have you thought about how that will affect, let's just say, local pharmacies? Pinion Hills, they're independent, homegrown. How will that affect them?
Mr. Chair, I do not know how many prescriptions that would move from their pharmacy. I can definitely get that report for you. I'm sure.
definitely get that report for you. I'm sure there are a few that it would affect, but they would still be using them for, you know, any fill that they would come up along the way. But I would have to get back to you on that.
So, let me ask anybody. Commissioner Crowley, or Todd Chini, Beckstead, is that something that we ought to think about? No big deal? Or what?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I think it's critical to see what percentage of market it is outside of box stores. So, box store money doesn't generally stay here other than employees.
Well, I'm not talking about box stores. I'm talking about Medicare or Pinyon.
Right. But those, how much of their business is the whole picture? And how much do our participants who are utilizing a prescription on a continuous basis are utilizing those places? We don't have that data.
Right. So, right. And that's what I said. So, I'm asking you, does it matter or not? Do we just go for it and say, sorry?
Depending on the benefit, I think it matters a lot.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Sullivan.
Mr. Chair.
Hey, do you feel good about this?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Sullivan, I think it's a great program, but, you know, I'm here to get your feedback and see if it is something that you would like to consider.
Okay. Look, I, yes, Commissioner Beckstead.
Does it require the employees to do it?
Yes.
Or is it still voluntary?
Requires the word.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Beckstead, right now, we have voluntary mail. This would require all maintenance medications. It is estimated it would affect about 380 members that are on prescriptions.
Chair, I think it also is duly noted that we're cutting our deficit by half to go into the program. And there are some people who don't like that. I just, because I've already got it set up, and I just call them when they get it. Or they call me. Yeah, I just, I'm at a point where I'd like more information about the impact on local businesses.
Okay. All right. If that's the case, I tend to agree. Do we, where's my lawyer? Need to do a motion to table? Okay.
I'm sure I can move the table later.
Moving second to table. To those in favor, say aye.
Next meeting.
Well, until she can find the information out.
For the next.
We could easily do it.
Well, when you table it, you just tell it.
15, 16.
All right. Yes. All right. Those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? All right. Commissioner Sully, I think you said yes. She's going to try and have it to us to the 15th. If not, then you'll, yeah. If she can, and if not, then someone wise will make that decision. Okay.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. That gets us to item number three. Consideration of acceptance of new logo and rebranding for San Juan County Fire Department. Devin Neely, PR man. Good job. All righty.
Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for your time. I come back before you this afternoon. Devin Neely, the Public Relations Manager, along with Chief John Muller, San Juan County Fire Department, request your approval of a change of name and logo for the San Juan County Fire Service. In an effort to continually progress the fire service in the county, the fire department recently sought input from members regarding the name, mission, and department logo under the direction and division of Chief John Muller. In an effort to present the members of the possibility of an update, we began with a request for member-submitted logo design suggestions, as well as updated motto and vision. Survey was sent to all department members and staff. 135 responses were returned. Members feel strongly that the department should be renamed San Juan County Fire and Rescue, better aligning the department to services rendered, and staff agrees. Members and staff agree that the mission and vision should remain the same. Members were also polled on a possible change in logo and branding based on current and submitted artwork. 134 members voted on a new logo to be used in the new grant, which is what we see before you. The logo is a Maltese cross overlaid with the zeus symbol and sunset behind the shiprock pinnacle. The fire service traditional Maltese cross is a symbol of protection, going back to the Crusades, and adaption of the cross of the Knights of St. John of Jerusalem. Zeus symbol, obviously our state symbol, and represented the sun. I don't need to get into all of that for you in the center, though. The shiprock pinnacle is silhouetted against a western sunset, which is taken from the San Juan County logo. That, of course, conveys a message of unity between the fire department as a part of the county. The question, of course, comes to costs. The immediate costs to the proposal are already budgeted for the fire department volunteers, are all issued T-shirts, which we are out of and need to be ordered, and can be done so with old or new logo with no impact to the budget. Polo shirts will be embroidered to give to volunteers as well, which is already a budgeted cost. Most apparatus does not bear a logo, however, as apparatus is updated, the name will be updated and branded on any new apparatus. Changes to current badges, around $300 per vehicle, and staff will identify five to 10 vehicles for costs of around $3,000 for rebadging immediately. The existing fleet will be rebadged over the next five years on a strategic basis, targeting probably newer apparatus that we know will be in service for quite a while. Sign-up dates for fire stations are already budgeted in the 21, 22 year. It will be handled strategically as well over the next five years. Costs to update any digital presence can be handled in-house at a minimal cost, mostly staff time. The design of the logo will cost around $600, and the new display logo will cost around $300. As new printed materials are needed, they will be updated with the new logo. We estimate this will be around $4,000 as a startup cost. You see the logo there before you. We will stand for any questions.
Questions?
When was the last time you changed those, Devin?
Say again, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Neely, when was the last time you changed them? When we had the county change those logos? Have we ever changed them?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Sullivan, that was the logo that was adopted in 2001, when the fire service was consolidated under the heading of San Juan County. And we haven't made any changes since 2001. So, we're looking at the 20th year of the consolidated fire service, and we believe that this change will be a valuable reminder, not only in name, but in sight to the citizens.
Mr. Crowley, Commissioner Crowley has a question.
Mr. Chair, I was looking at the questions with regard to motto and division statement. And then the next one is the branding survey. There's a page that has answer choices. Are, will they be allowed to make a selection from one of these five? Or I don't understand what the option to the individual was.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Crowley, the membership was presented with, I believe, five different options for logo, all submitted by staff or members. And those were the logos that were presented to membership to vote on. We presented that as a way to get feedback and take the temperature of the membership. And the logo presented before you is the one that the membership agreed. They liked best out of the five.
So, this is, I'm talking about the branding survey?
Yes, correct.
So, the patches, are these five patches?
Oh, I see what you're saying. So, when we presented that, there is the logo. And then if they chose the logo that was chosen, there was a choice of two different patches. So, the logo would be used generally in reference to the fire department, but the patch will be a shoulder patch that'll be on uniforms. Does that make
Who selects the shoulder patch? Is that an option to the individual? Or is it an option to select one or the whole group?
The entire department will use the patch that was selected, and one of those received more votes than the other ones. So, we're in design on that patch to make sure that it's going to work well as an embroidered, embroidered piece. And we're, obviously, the fire department's working very closely with the marketing department to make sure that all of this is rolled out in a seamless manner.
Chair, then we have 135 respondents. Is that out of like 80? 220. So, that's 40, 55%ish.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
So, the logo is going to be different than the patch on the uniform? Is that what I got from that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Beckstead, the logo is incorporated into the patch. It's common for a fire service to have something a little bit different between the logo that identifies the department and the patch that's worn on the uniform or used on uniforms.
That logo appears. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I remember that we go ahead and accept it, do the logo?
Okay. All right. Is there a second?
One second.
Moving second, other discussion. I would just tell you there, Mr. Devin, if you put a little dot right in the middle, it would look like a nose in a wolf howling. Right?
Mr. Chairman, I am honored to have this. This looks like, I'd say, a coyote.
Yeah. I like that. The wild.
We'd like to feature our shiprock, which is very famous.
Indeed.
With our county. We can have a river running in front of shiprock there. It's indicative of the heritage of our
All right. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. The unanimous, I believe. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
That gets us to the report. The county manager.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. You have a little longer report than normal as it relates to activities and issues surrounding COVID. And I'd like to have Mr. Nestis, our emergency manager, come up. I know he wants to give an update specifically on a new testing site that was added as of today, and then also some of the planning he's been doing related to vaccines and the distribution of the vaccine out here in San Juan County. Before I do that, though, just quickly, I'd like to just cover a couple quick items with you. Today, December 1st, was the day that we are ceasing applications, small business, business continuity applications here at the county. That was the day collectively chosen between us and the cities to do so. And that's a good thing, because we have actually expended the full amount that we had not had reallocated, which is up to $265,000. So, we had a pretty big flood of applications within the last week. I'd say at least 10 since last Wednesday. So, we had a lot of businesses take heed to the request to submit applications, and I think that's good news. We're getting money out to the, to the community. And although our program, because of funding, et cetera, is ceasing, the state of New Mexico's program, I think this is important for the community, becomes available this Friday via application with the New Mexico Finance Authority. So, that's the $100 million the legislature set aside.
Have the requirements been set out yet?
They have not set the requirements. That all gets unveiled on Friday. They, I do know, based upon the discussion at the special session, that the grant amounts will be up to $50,000 per business. I think a preference will be given to those that are in tourism and hospitality, given some of the extra, you know, additional losses that they've seen through this pandemic. But those details have not been defined. That all gets released on Friday. I think the strong suggestion there is that all of our businesses are ready to apply on the New Mexico Finance Authority website come Friday, because those dollars will go quick. $100 million, it sounds like, and it is, a lot of money. But when you think about statewide competition, that's going to go pretty quick.
So, individual businesses apply directly through their website. So, although our program, we are out of funding at this point. I think that's the case with City of Bloomfield. City of Farmington, I know, is really close and tight on funding. So, we've all, I think, done a very noble job of getting word out to the community and getting businesses to apply. So, that's important. As it relates to our funding assistance we've provided via contract to Echo, those dollars that are available to the community for rental, mortgage, utility assistance, unexpected funeral costs, $35,000 is left of the $120,000 that we've sent over to them. And folks in our community have until December 30th to go apply for those dollars to Echo. Now, we would strongly encourage them to get there sooner than the 30th. We'd really like to see them get there closer to the 15th, because we've got events to submit and turn around a reimbursement to the state. But we're, I know Mr. Cox is in close communication with the director of Echo to make sure that we can try to get all those dollars expended. And if we have to go to December 30th, we'll certainly stand ready to do that and submit a reimbursement request that same day with the state. So, just wanted to update you on that. In terms of COVID cases here internally, I know there's been an uptick, obviously, statewide and even here within San Juan County. To date, we've had, we have four employees today who were out with COVID. Since March, we've had 35 positive cases in the county. So, the majority of folks have recovered and are back to work. And we've tested 161 employees throughout the county. So, I just wanted you to have those numbers. I think the important number is that we're doing really well when it comes to keeping our employees safe and a very low rate, positivity rate here within the county today. So, with that, I'll turn some time over to Mr. Nestis, and then I probably at the tail end, just update you on yesterday's announcement from the governor, the new public health order, and what that means for us.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Mr. Stark and I decided we're going to collaborate today's COVID report for you with three bullet points. First, vaccine planning that we have going on in San Juan County, the new testing site, and then what Mr. Stark spoke about from red to green. So, he'll cover that part. The first part is the vaccine planning that's been going on in San Juan County through the Emergency Management Office. I have a core planning team that's been working with the Department of Health and our local agencies on how a vaccine will look as it arrives in San Juan County. We have to follow CDC guidelines, and the Phase 1A for healthcare professionals will be that first phase of that vaccine. And depending on how much we get it, back and forth, they're saying New Mexico's going to get 20% of the overall vaccine, so we're going to have to fight for some of that. But what we do receive in San Juan County is going to the hospital so we can take care of our healthcare workers. So, an example of the healthcare professional, how that tier goes, the hospital number one, long-term care facilities, the assisted living, outpatients, home health, pharmacies, EMS, and public health. So, that's that first tier. That second tier, I'll just go ahead, and even though we're not prepared for it, is the essential workers, which is food and agriculture, transportation, education, energy, water, wastewater, and law enforcement. So, we're anticipating that to come in the early spring, but we'll take care of our hospital personnel first when we get that first phase of vaccine.
What's always spring to you? March?
That's, it's March. That's what we're looking at. So, after March, then we're looking at community vaccine after that. So, it's a long process. We've planned for it. We have McGee Park all ready to go. We're using that at this time for flu testing, or COVID testing, or the PRC test. And we're actually using that for vaccine or the flu. So, it's served very well. It's a drive-through. People need to get out. And it's serving as well. We utilize the college as well. The other thing about the planning process that we found is that Walgreens and CVS pharmacies are part of that plan. They're able to actually go into the assisted livings and help vaccine with that as well. So, we're including all those partners. We're not leaving anyone out. My plan as the emergency managers, the more help, the better. So, if I can get the fire departments to help with the law enforcement and their agencies, that's less of the community event we have to do at McGee Park. If I can get home health to take care of their agencies, we can have all collaborative assistance, and we can help that. So, that gets me to my next bullet point, unless I have any questions.
Let me ask you this one. Did you have that list that you wrote, the set of the three tiers? Can you provide us with a copy of that?
Yes, I can. And I'll make copies, and then we can email that to the Commissioners as well. It's CDC guidelines.
All right. This is one packet, correct?
Yes. So, do I have any questions regarding the vaccine planning for San Juan County? So do I have any questions regarding the vaccine planning for San Juan County? I'll be happy to answer before I move on to my next bullet point. Okay, our next bullet point is is curative testing in San Juan County. We're pleased to announce that over the weekend, Mr. Stark and I had a shortened weekend in helping the governor's office bring curative testing to San Juan County. What is curative testing? It's actually what you've seen and heard on the news. It's the saliva test. It's less invasive than the Q-tip up the nose. What saliva test is, is you make an appointment online. You go to Judy Nelson Elementary in Kirtland. We have all that information on our OEM Facebook. You arrive with your scheduled appointments. They hand you a a Q-tip in a packet. You put the saliva test, you put the Q-tip in your mouth and your cheek on each side, the roof of your mouth, underneath your tongue. It's a minute-long test. Put it in the pouch, give it back to the tester, and they ship it off. And the great thing about that is we get results back 24 to 48 hours. So that's new to San Juan County. We put that on the website of the county in Kirtland, again at Judy Nelson Elementary, seven days a week. National Guard is currently hosting that from 10 till 3 every day. So again, the log, the login for registrations on our OEM website, we emailed it to the world so that people can get on at their leisure and register or schedule the actual appointment.
Can can that be done now?
That can be done now. It's the the testing began today. It was set up yesterday.
And you go on which which website?
It's on the OEM website, should be on the county website, curative.com.
All right, Commissioner Beck, Commissioner Beckstead.
What's the capacity in a day, how many people can make that?
Good question, Commissioner, Chairman Forner, Commissioner Beckstead. The capacity, what I was told today is they had up to 270 tests a day that they're able to give. And today, with a short notice, they were already able to give 140. People had 140, and that was at 1,300 hours at one o'clock. They had 140 people scheduled today. So they're able to do that again, seven days a week. And I think the Air Force chief told Mr. Stark and I that they were able to do up to 300 a day, correct? But today, those numbers were too small. She might have been subtracting what they've already done. We're pleased to have that additional. So that doesn't that doesn't mean that the PRC testing, the nasal at McGee Park or San Juan College is going to go away. It's going to be in conjunction with so that we continue to provide testing in San Juan County. And with that, I'll turn it over to our next bullet point.
Yeah, thanks. Just the last one is, I just wanted to bring to your attention the new public health order that went into effect yesterday. It's it's set to remain through December 30th. So although the the governor has provided, the state has provided the red to green framework for safe reopening, it's it's not something that can't be without change. So I think this is just the starting point of how this is going to work. Ultimately, you know, we've been set the the new metrics for how we can determine and how where we stand today in terms of red, yellow, green. Today, 32 of 33 counties are red. Only Los Alamos County is in the yellow metric. And then this framework provides the different capacities of which you can be open based upon your status. And so obviously, as you move up the scale, you're able to to have more capacity. Right now, red does not allow for dine-in services at a restaurant. If we were to move to the yellow, for example, just using restaurants as the example, that would allow for 25% maximum capacity for indoor dining and 75% outside. Now, I will say that ultimately, the green level, and I think there's some confusion out there, somehow the citizens, some citizens think this means complete reopening. Our economy will be completely reopened once we reach the green level. Just using the restaurants as an example, if we were to get to green, 50% maximum capacity even then, you're not at 100%. And you still have some businesses that would not be able to open, such as close-contact recreational facilities. And all those are defined within the new health order. And examples of those types of facilities are indoor movie theaters, indoor museums, amusement parks, bars, casinos, which we have a casino here that's still closed. And so the question, the other question we're getting is how quickly could we expect to move through these levels? Today, we're red. What would it take for San Juan County to be become yellow or to become and make it to the and or the green level? Well, today, you've got to meet two metrics. One is your your test positivity rate has to be below five. And if that's the case, that would allow you to move up a level to yellow. That's how Los Alamos County is at yellow today. Their test positivity rate's at 4.3%, whereas ours as of today is 14.3%. The other metric you need to meet, you've got to meet both if you eventually want to get to green, would be the average reported cases for 100,000. You've got to have eight per 100,000. So you basically take your population and multiply out that times eight. So for us, that would mean 10 positive cases reported a day. So over a two-week period, and that's going to be the the standard timeframe that the state's going to use for reevaluating whether or not a county could move up to the next level. So the 16th is a Wednesday. That'll be the next time the state updates the the two-week rolling average for positivity rate and for positive tests. You know, more than likely, it's going to be very difficult for us to reach and move into the green area just because of the positive, the average cases reported would be for us, that's 140 cases over a over a 14-day period, because, you know, we're allowed 10 per day. And so now, is it impossible? I would say it's not impossible, because if you look back, there were, one, two, three, four, five, nine weeks from August till the first part of October, where we would have had a combination of those weeks, or two-week periods where we would have met that that rate.
To be in green.
To be in green. Assuming that we had our positivity rate under 5% too, because that's the other metric. So so I just want you to be aware of that. You know, I think it's very important for citizens to know that this doesn't get us to fully open, and these metrics ultimately are are being laid out to encourage, really, quite frankly, more testing, trying to lower the positivity rate. We need more citizens to go out and get a test, because ultimately, that would bring us down. Today, we're 13th out of 33 counties, both on the test positivity rate as well as the incidence rate, eight per 100,000. So we're just slightly at a third, roughly, speaking.
Well, Mr. Stark, you apparently are that county official that was referred to that understands this and is able to explain it. Yes, indeed. And, you know, as chairman of the San Juan County Commission, I'd like to share a simple message with the community on opening. Our goal kinda is green. That's our short-term goal, because our long-term goal is to not be any color and just be open, have our community open. So in order to get our county and our businesses reopened, we need to be tested. And especially those who are non-symptomatic, not having signs, we'd love you to go get tested, because that's how we're going to lower our test rates, our test percentage rate, right, our test, our test positivity rate. And so we'd we'd like you all to go get tested. And you can do any of the areas that were talked about. I'm sure we would all prefer the curative testing, because it's less invasive. But the fact is, let's get tested. Let's immediately get to yellow and then get to green, and then heck with the colors, and let's open our community. Other commissioners?
I think we ought to just open it up.
All right. All right, Commissioner Todechini.
Well, when I first understood it, it was like if you came in contact with somebody who had the virus, then it was go get tested. So now it's everybody.
Everybody.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Todechini, the messaging has changed, and it's changed because of test availability. So early on, there weren't there weren't a lot of available tests. They're really specifically being targeted to those who were truly symptomatic and not for everyone. And so now that there's more testing, tests available and testing capacity in terms of test sites, definitely that messaging has changed from the state that they want to see more folks get tested, because, you know, there are a lot of asymptomatic carriers out there. And you might remember with our own detention center facility, we we had an outbreak, and and of the 150 folks that we had that were COVID-positive, 149 were asymptomatic. So we only had one symptomatic detainee. So it just goes to show that asymptomatic spread is real, and that's how a lot of folks end up with the disease. You have carriers that don't know, and and maybe you're following COVID-safe practices, maybe you're not. But so yes, the messaging has definitely changed because of the availability of tests and testing sites.
Well, the testing of having that thing shoved up your nose, so people said, they they said it was very uncomfortable. So I guess now with the swabbing of your saliva, that's a little more gentle.
Yes, and perhaps either Mr. Nestus or our wise county official can answer this question.
Maybe.
Is the the curative testing, is it as reliable as the other tests, or is there greater or lesser chance of false negatives?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we asked that question of the the chief of the National Guard who's standing this side up. And essentially, it's it's not as reliable as the as the PCR test, but it's certainly far more reliable than the rapid test, because you do get a lot of, certainly on asymptomatic cases, the rapid test will give you a lot of false negatives. And so he didn't give us a percentage, per se, but he said it's it's neck and neck with the PCR test, maybe just slightly less reliable. So it's, you should feel good about going to get a curative test. Of course, they give you specific instructions of how you swab your mouth and self-administer or you administer yourself. And so you've got to make sure you spend 20 seconds rotating through the majority of your mouth to make sure you get a good, clean sample.
Commissioner Beckstead.
What is, is insurance going to have to pay for the curative testing? What's that situation as a as a county with our with our insurance? Are we going to have to pay for employees to go get curative?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Beckstead, we do not. In fact, we actually had a couple of employees go today and run through the curative tests so that they could give us feedback on how it worked. There is a registration process online. It does not ask for insurance information. Even if you go to a DOH site, they do ask for insurance information. They don't bill it, and we certainly haven't received any DOH bills within our within our plan. Now, we have received some bills that have been a little concerning from some of the out-of-network for our plan, our out-of-network urgent care facilities here in town that have actually resulted in some some large bills, one of which we're contesting. I hope that's not the case for other individuals in the community who may be going to one of those sites and potentially seeing a large bill. So what you should know as a citizen or county employee is that the DOH sites, McGee Park, San Juan College, the curative site in Kirtland, will absolutely not cost you or charge your insurance. So a good question, that's a very good question.
All right, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, just one last item. I'd like to, I told you it'd be a little longer than normal. The good news is we still got a few minutes left. Yeah, the sun did set. My apologies there. I'd like to introduce to you our new juvenile services director, Bowen Belt. Why don't you come up, Bowen? You know, Tracy left some big shoes slash heels to fill. In fact, Bowen made that comment at her retirement.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'm not going to fill any heels. Shoeless if I need to.
But I just want to introduce Bowen. You've obviously know Bowen. He's been with us for 15 years, is our shelter manager for seven years, our deputy administrator for eight years. We went through a recruitment process for this position, and I just want to say Bowen brings with him an excellent understanding of the juvenile services mission, vast knowledge of the operation. And, you know, a really critical piece to the success of juvenile services is having great relationships with our many partner agencies in the community. And that's from the judicial system to CYFD to shelters, because that's all part of making sure we provide really good wraparound services here in the county. Bowen's worked really hard to develop those relationships, so.
And the, you know, the lack of a better way to say it, the peaceful transition of power to the new guy coming in is very important. And we appreciate you putting your name and taking the position.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, commissioners. Yeah, I'll I will continue the good work that's been done up to this point and a high level of service that's been expected from this department. Thank you.
Thank you, Bowen.
That's it.
Mr. Crowley.
Back to the discussion with the testing, I guess the next whole phase would be, we have a field for how it's going to roll out with regard to vaccine. Just like wanting to bring something special to that now or in two weeks or, you know, because it could be around the corner. There are issues with storage and refrigeration and stuff like that. And I know he has some plans, but we already talked a little bit about it, but I I think it's good for the rest of us here to have got the rest of the story.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Crowley, in regard to vaccine, you're referring to the Pfizer vaccine that has to be stored at negative 70 degrees. So so that was a caveat to us in our planning phase. Information that we received from the Department of Health that they are going to use some of the COVID cares funding to send a freezer up here and place it at the public health office. So that's twofold. We've already had a work order for a 220-volt outlet from McGee Park, Mr. Hill, that will be installed. But on the other hand, those freezers are on backorder, and so who knows if we're ever going to get it or when it will become available. So being an emergency manager, we always have to have redundancy and a backup plan. So working with our core group again, Ruth Brooks found that San Juan College had said freezer. So they have now transferred that set freezer to San Juan Regional. San Juan Regional has it in their possession, and we can use that when it becomes available. The other thing is some of the other vaccines that are coming out, because of the lack of the negative 70 vaccine from Pfizer, they'll catch up, and those don't have to be frozen at negative 70 degrees, so they can be stored in regular refrigerator. So we have all facets, we think, covered, and hopefully we'll be there. Something that you brought to light on an email is possibly could use some of our COVID cares money to purchase said freezer for San Juan County from McGee Park, so that's a possibility. But today, my coordinator on the Emergency Operations Center called with the State DOC, they were saying if the counties want to buy a freezer, they could use it on their disaster grant funds. And so we can possibly put in for a freezer and just chalk it to our COVID disaster grant and buy it that way as well. So we have a couple.
Do we have to do an RFP on on the freezer, or can we just go buy it?
It would depend on the price. It's over 20,000.
Twenty? What are the prices?
They're looking at 14 to 20,000. But the other thing is dry ice, and I've arranged delivery from Praxair, which is Lindy Company. We can provide a contract with them, because they have that working relationship from our drills, and they said, hey, yeah, we can provide you all the dry ice you need. And Dr. Greenberg, part of our core group, is, hey, we won't need as much dry ice and a negative 70 freezer, as long as we get the vaccine in and we get it out and vaccinate our people. So it doesn't need to sit in storage. So so we've got we've got some planning still to do, but I think we kind of got that covered.
I just appreciate that this Nestus has been on top of this for months, because it's a it's a changing ballgame every half a day, you know? At times, you have to deal with the things. First, they just got sending emails, what about a freezer?
No, good point.
But sometimes you find things that that hasn't been seen in the county yet. But sometimes you find things that hasn't been seen in the county yet. I just forward them and they're already gone. Oh, that's good to know, we'll look into that. So I just appreciate that there's such coordination among our people in our community. Thank you for your part.
Yes, Commissioner Toldachini.
Is it just this vaccine that has to be in the freezer, or is it all vaccines are like that?
Well, all vaccines have to be in shipping in a frozen-type state or in a cold state. But this particular vaccine, Pfizer, has to be at a negative 70. So it's this particular vaccine. And just while we're discussing COVID, I also want to let you know that we're continuing to communicate with our partners on the Navajo Nation. Just this weekend, we assisted IHS Shiprock, their emergency manager. And you might have heard rumor that they were crisis standard care already, which wasn't the point. We got some assistance on staffing, and we bridged that gap for them this weekend. And just today, I introduced the emergency manager at IHS to the tribal liaison at the State Emergency Operations Center, and they're working closely now so that they can obtain PPE more readily without having the headaches of going through the wall. So we continue to help our partners there. Mr. Stark and Mayor Duckett have reached out to delegate Ms. Newton, and she's on our stakeholder calls, been invited to our stakeholder calls. And we've reached out to her as well. So we want to let you know that we continue to work with our partners.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Thank you. That's it for me.
All right. Next is reports from elected officials and department heads. Just come up and state your name for the record. Mr. Chief.
Chairman, Commissioners, I'd like to introduce Joshua Baca, our new division chief of fire training, with David Yoke's retirement. We brought him up from Las Lourdes, actually. He was an instructor down at the State Fire Academy the past few years.
Come on up.
I'm bailing your face.
Tell us a little bit about that.
Commissioners, my name is Joshua Baca. I've spent approximately 25 years in the fire service. Spent the last five with the New Mexico State Fire Training Academy, making relationships across the state that I hope to bring to the fire department here in our organization to help protect our citizens. And I have recently moved up here and live in the Acres, so I am a citizen of San Juan County.
Welcome aboard. Yeah, your family time, or are you by yourself?
Right now, I'm by myself. My family's coming up in a couple of months, once we've settled everything in Las Lourdes.
All right, well, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, any other reports from elected officials and department heads?
Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, someone's coming up.
Might hit you to the punch there.
Coming up to talk about bridges and things, so hold on.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Stark asked that I give you an update on our bridge on County Road 5500. I am certainly pleased to report that after, I guess it's been about three years of planning, design, grant writing, right-of-way acquisition, we do have a, it's now considered a shovel-ready project. It will be advertised for competitive with this coming Sunday. Bids will close January the 17th, and I'm hopeful that we will have a bid that's in budget that will present to the commission in February 2021 for approval of the contract. And it's a 225-day construction contract as advertised, so this time next year, we'll be planning a ribbon-cutting. Mr. Fortner and Crowley won't be here at that time, but I would certainly request that you come back for ribbon-cutting, giving all the updates you've endured over the past three years. That's the end for you. We'll move forward.
All right, Commissioner Sully, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was going to ask wanting to explain to the public the following process for the probate judge appointment.
Oh, sure, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Sullivan. Yes, Mr. Eccles put together an application process that we've made available on our website. We are taking applications as we speak, and up until December 11th. And then those will be collected and forwarded to the commission in advance of the December 15th meeting. And then I think it's the intent of the commission to take action that evening on all the applications we receive. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any other comments, reports from elected officials and department heads? Commissioner Crowley.
I just need to ask, Stark, did I understand that the next CARE Act money that was appropriated from the special session, which is one to the Mexico Finance Authority, we're waiting on clarification of how that will be distributed in the guidelines, because they're not developed? Is that the one you were referring to?
Correct. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Crowley, we did receive an update today from our legislative liaison that, in fact, with a link to the website. You could go there now, and you'll see CARES Act grant. And if you were to click on application process, requirements, it just says more to come or coming soon, I can't remember which. But anyway, his information is that that process and that application process will open Friday. But he didn't have any more information than that, because I think, as you pointed out to me in an email, the New Mexico Finance Authority was taking comment on eligibility and requirements up until.
I mean, there was no time to comment.
Yeah, you had to be in right-of-way with comment. And so I think they've taken that comment, they're putting together the program, and then we'll strip that out Friday for distribution statewide.
Mr. Chair, I just hoped that we'd have a chance to actually weigh in, because there are so many independent contractors who are, maybe you work in a styling salon, but you wholly are independent contractors who brings a space in a building with somebody, or a number of other kinds of things like that. Like I work construction, I'm a handyman, I do this, I do that, got nothing from COVID money yet, is still facing the same difficulties that other people. But if you have a job, you know, and you've been a contractor, and you got laid off, you could apply for unemployment, but that isn't work with contractors. So there's such a gamut of, I hope there's something in there that we can help the public find how to connect to that.
You bet. Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Crowley, you can count on that, that we'll definitely link that up. I know Mr. Newley does an excellent job getting that communication out across all of our platforms and encouraging folks to, as much as we can, on other platforms to get folks to apply. And I think in this case, we want to make sure our local businesses, and that's what we're talking about tonight, are ready to apply on Friday. And we don't want to see a big lag there, because those dollars will go quick, especially if it's 50,000, you know, per pop.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Toldachini.
Commissioner Beckstead and I are on MPO, and just want you all to know that that's finalized, that all that construction that was done on the Bluefield.
Oh, yeah.
It's all done.
That's great.
All right, any other reports from elected officials and department heads?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Sully.
Hey, I'd like to just express my gratitude and thanks, and I enjoyed working with you and Jim, and I hope, I'll ask for you for the future.
Well, we're going to have one more meeting, so I don't want to hear any goodbyes or tears until then.
Well, I don't know whether you'd show up or not.
I hadn't thought about that, Sully. I expect everybody to be here in person on that date. That includes you.
We want refreshments.
That's right. All right. All right, looks like that's it for elected officials, department heads. Now we're at the comments input from the general public. Limited to three minutes per person on subject the commission has not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken in this meeting which relates to comments or input from the general public. Do we have any comments from the general public, Mr. Devon?
I have heard that some of the committees have been online.
All right.
We've received none in advance.
And we have not received any advance. All right. In that case, that gets us to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And second, if those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those motion carries, we are adjourned.